Okay, everybody, we've got a big group in front of us, I see. I thank you all for showing up and getting on this meeting. You don't know I'm your VCCR president. And, you know, I welcome you all to this town hall meeting on Zoom. We've got a full agenda today, so it'll start with, after I do introductions and explanations, it'll start with Marta Golding Brown, our Director of Government Affairs. She'll provide information on rent control, tenant protection, residential and commercial evictions, and then she'll touch on the City of Oxnard Building and Records report requirements. From there, we'll have CAR's CEO, Joel Singer. He'll be joining us to provide a current COVID-19 information, and then we'll make some time for Q and A. For a couple of housekeeping items, I'd ask that all attendees, they're in a muted position now, and this will ensure that we can be heard clearly. Please utilize the chat feature to post additional questions. However, as a courtesy, we were provided with questions when you registered. If we have more time at the end, we'll cover some more, but we will be utilizing the Raise Your Hand feature today. And so with that, let's get started, and I introduce VCCR Government Affairs Director, Marta Golding Brown.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I have several updates for you on the national local legislation that will affect you and your business for now and in the foreseeable future. But I wanted to start with a class that we held on Monday on rent control and evictions, and specifically AB 1482, and some of the changes that that new legislation that went into effect in January have for property managers. So what I want to let you know is that that class that we held on Monday was recorded, and we are in the process of trying to upload it to our YouTube channel. However, it's going a little bit slow just because of all the internet usage right now, so we will have it up later than, probably by close of business day today and possibly this weekend. We also have the slide presentation that was used in that class available to you, and we will be sending that out to you in one of our e-blasts. If you're on Facebook, please start watching Facebook for that information, and also our Twitter account. We'll be trying to get information out to everyone as quickly as possible as it becomes available. I think somebody just joined. Will they mute themselves? Okay, continuing on, if you want to get to our YouTube channel, it is Ventura Coastal. That's the name of our YouTube channel, and you can find it by searching Ventura Coastal or Ventura County Coastal Association Realtors or VCCAR. So we'll start uploading some of the classes that we're holding and some of these sessions like today onto that YouTube channel. Okay, so now let's get down to my legislative update, federal update. The stimulus package was approved by Senate yesterday and Congress this morning. It was in its head signature. So I'll just talk about a few of the pieces that were included in that stimulus package that will affect you and your business going forward. All federally backed loans, secured loans will be approved, will be provided 120 days forbearance of payments. So that would be Freddie, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and Veterans Administration. 90 days for federally backed rental property owners, and NAR is looking to extend that to one year. All right, it also includes forbearance, and by the way, forbearance simply means deferring payments until later, including interest. So you will have to pay interest as well as your payments. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac have also said that they will consider a forbearance of up to 12 months. Additionally, they were ordered to suspend all foreclosure and eviction actions for at least 60 days. It also includes for you forgivable SBA loans, direct payments, and unemployment assistance for independent contractors. So that's a big piece that NAR was able to get included in this legislation. It includes pandemic unemployment assistance for those persons not otherwise eligible for unemployment insurance, such as independent contractors. And you will be able to obtain unemployment assistance for up to 39 weeks. And finally, as we've all heard in the stimulus package, there are direct payments to taxpayers, which we've been hearing about for a few days now, and that will be, they will be direct deposit to your account if your account is registered with the IRS already in three-plus weeks, give or take, but at least three weeks from the final signage of the package. So hopefully you've already given the IRS your bank account information, and if not, you might want to update your status there with the IRS. In an upcoming cleanup bill in Congress, so this would be package number four that would be going through, there is going to be cleanup language that they're looking at, and the approval potentially, this is what's included in the bill, not approved yet, the possible approval of electronic or remote notary of documents for escrows. So that could be huge for us. NAR is working very hard on that. And then the possibility of a national rental eviction moratorium. So stay tuned. Neither one of these are in the current stimulus package that was approved, but we may be hearing more about it in the coming weeks. Okay, so your state update. Following Executive Order 2920 on March 16 by the governor, things have been changing in the world of real estate, as we know. In accordance with the governor's executive order, at least 14 cities have adopted temporary eviction moratoriums with numerous other jurisdictions, including Ventura County, indicating plans to do the same. And I'll go through our cities here a little bit further on the local update. Just wanted to let you know, and we will talk about that. The major banks have deferred mortgage payments for at least three months if you can show that it is COVID-19 related. So you must be able to show that you were laid off, unemployed, something of that nature, or you're an independent contractor unable to do business. Bank of America has stated that it's on a month-to-month until the end of the crisis, so very similar to what the other banks are doing. It just stated a little bit differently, so I wanted to make sure you were clear on that. Many lenders have said they won't report missing payment, excuse me. Many lenders said they won't report missed payments to credit agencies during the pandemic, so credit score should stay in effect as of March 16. The governor also announced major banks and financial institutions have agreed to delay foreclosures and provide mortgage relief to California homeowners. So some good news there, I think. Let's go to our local ordinance updates. So new eviction moratoriums have been passed in the City of Camarillo, the City of Fillmore, and the City of Ventura is considering theirs on Monday evening. They have two options that are available for the council that are currently proposed in their agenda item. One is a residential only, and a second is a residential and commercial option provided for consideration. So it's coming in Ventura. We just don't know what it looks like quite yet. The City of Oxnard was the first city to respond to the governor's executive order in our area and was the first city to execute the eviction moratorium. Included in their provision, however, in good news, is the suspension of the building records requirement to be completed before the close of escrow. You are still required to request the building records and go through the motions as if it was going to be needed during escrow. But what the city has said is if it doesn't come in for you before close of escrow, you can close escrow if everything else is satisfied with the lender and all of that. So I wanted to make sure you are aware of that. That could be good news for you. Well, and let me take in the side here. Tim Comstock, our president, and I had a conversation just this morning with the Community Development Director, and we asked if a lending institution was requiring that that building records requirement was completed, could we ask on a case-by-case basis? And he said yes, that we could put that, and he asked it to come through me, through the association, to him, because he would have to assign certain staff, and staff are working remotely, so there would be considerations there. So if it's required, we could potentially look at it on a case-by-case basis. So that's just an update as of about an hour ago. Okay, many state lawmakers are requiring a statewide rental eviction, requesting a statewide rental. Okay, let me start over, sorry. Many state lawmakers are requesting a statewide rental eviction moratorium, and there are two emergency bills currently in the legislature, AB 828 and SB 939. And they have both been introduced in the state legislature, and if passed, would place a moratorium on both commercial and residential evictions during the state of emergency. So they're not approved yet. I'll talk about some of the, briefly about what's in them, but they're not approved. They're just under consideration. AB 828 would ban evictions and foreclosures on residences through the end of California state of emergency and 15 days afterward. The bill allows tenants to set up payment plans to repay their rent. If tenants can show documentation exhibiting economic hardship, their plan can be extended through 2021. On SB 939, it would make illegal to evict tenants from commercial property in California as long as the COVID-19 state of emergency proclaimed by the Governor Newsom was still in effect. The bill would not apply to eviction proceedings that may have already begun before the declaration on March 4. Okay, that's my state update. Let's go with the county recorders office. Ventura County is still electronically recording, so business as usual is the current modus operandi at the county for closings. The Ventura County Recorder's Office is starting on March 25, is not accepting any documents for special recordings after noon. So that is a change for you. Previously, they were able to submit until 1:30 or 1:45-ish. So now you have to make sure that all of your original documents are ready by 11:00 a.m. to assure recording. Also, the City of Ventura is currently still requiring city reports. However, you can only order them online with credit cards, and no other format is being offered currently. This may change with what provisions are approved on Monday. We don't know. So as of today, they are still being required. Okay, I think that's all I have at the moment, Wendy, unless you have something for me to fill out, and I'll turn it back over to Tim. Thanks, everybody. Good luck out there.
Thank you, Marta, for all that good information. I'm looking to see, and I just scanned through it quickly. I don't see that Joel is on yet. Correct me if I'm wrong. Joel Singer, are you there? Okay, so let's move forward with a little information. Personally, what I'm getting right now, I have some listings out there. I'm getting a few agents actually calling me, unbelievably, calling me to ask to go show the property. If your head's in the sand and you don't understand this, we're in the state right now, shelter-at-home status. Okay, you're not, if you follow the CAR website, the microsite, you'll see that we are not to take any, do any showing activity face-to-face meetings with our clients. So please understand and share this with your offices, your brokerages. We've had discussions with some that said the ENO insurance will not cover this if we do this. So it's very important that we get that message out that we're not the person infecting our community, because this is important. It's not a joke, and I'm baffled how somebody doesn't understand this at this point. So I know a couple agents have told me that they're, put all their listings on hold. That's an option to avoid that conflict. Though when you do put your properties on hold, understand it's not being syndicated out to the other sites. So consumers may not see your property when, later, when they can actually come to see it. But, you know, and also, we have the ability to do the virtual tours now. If you've seen the VCCR emails, we blasted out multiple times, you'll see that you do have the ability to put your virtual tours on and note in the comment section the link to that particular website so that consumers can see your listings. Let's see, what else? Wendy, did you want to answer or feed some of those questions now? Or can we take some chat questions?
So we were going to hold off and let Joel answer some of those questions, but I was wondering if anyone had, why we wait for Joel, and I'm going to text right now. Do we have any questions from anyone for Marta? If you have a question, just unmute, ask your question, and then mute yourself when you're done, please.
Can I ask you, Marta? This is Cindy Diaz Kelly. Can I ask you, can you clarify, City of Oxnard reports? What is the level of requirement? Did I hear you say that you must go through the process of applying for it?
Yes, so you must request it just as you would normally, but because staff is working remotely and may or may not have the opportunity to go in and pull the reports at City Hall, if you do not receive them in a timely manner prior to close of escrow, the city is suspending that requirement on the escrow. So, but you still have to go through the motions so that they know it's opened, it's closed, and they've reviewed the building permits.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll pass that along to my escrow team, because I do have one in Oxnard that's supposed to close next week, and that is a one-line item that is not checked yet, is that city report. So I appreciate that update. Thank you.
Okay, if you need, I believe we're posting all of these. Wendy, you're going to have to help me out here. But the ones that have been approved, I believe we're posting on our website somewhere, or will be. So Wendy?
So yes, we're going to have a landing page from our homepage. We'll link it to social media. But for now, as we're going to reference later in the meeting, for those of you who are not familiar, CAR is updating their microsite really on an hourly, daily basis. So grab a pencil really quick. It's C-A-R-C-O-V-I-D-updates.org. And I'll say it one more time, C-A-R-C-O-V-I-D-updates.org. So we're taking informational lead from CAR and NAR on all of this information and sending it out. So most likely, if you're getting it from us, we've gotten it from them, and it's on that site. So make sure that you check that site, so.
Thank you.
I have a quick question to that same point. If an escrow does close during this time period, the requirement for the city report has been, you know, waived, so to speak, by the city. We apply for it, and it doesn't come. And then something negative were on that report. What is the liability as agents and city and seller and buyer? There's the possibilities there. I hate to think of those kind of things, but those are the kind of things that are going to come up with things like this happening. Does anybody know?
Sure, sure. I brought that point up with Jeff Lambert. You know, that is a concern that I had, because, you know, if a buyer assumes everything's permitted, and we find out they've got open permits and there's going to be a problem, you know, we may have a scenario of maybe we need to do a holdback in escrow just in case, or having some sort of, because your brokerages are all going to have to say, yeah, we're good with closing this without that, you know, permit status. So it's going to be, it'll be interesting, but at least we have the option of getting it closed. But yeah, it is a concern that we did address this morning.
Hey, Wendy?
I do, just a quick question, Marta. What about Ventura if they don't, if they're not able to get the report in?
That's something I need to follow up on, but I need to see what they approve on Monday first, and then we'll go from there. I just saw a question from Heather. It says, how can landlords get help? I.e. lender assistance if their tenant is unable to pay rent? Will the IRS be mailing assistance checks if they do not have your bank account on file? So I don't know about the, I believe yes on the mailing. That's what I've read, but I'm not an IRS expert. I was just sharing the information I had. And then, but it will just take longer that way. It's the three weeks if they have your account already loaded in their system. The other, the answer to the other question on landlord rental assistance. So if it's, depending upon where the loan is, they recommend that you call your lender. So if you are not getting rent from your tenants, that your lender has, a lot of the major lenders, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac and the VA, if it's a loan secured federally, also, they are trying to give assistance to property owners in that way. But you have to call and let them know that it's COVID-related. So if your tenant has an unemployment notice that you can then show to your financial institution, then you should be getting some relief. That's what the goal of the legislation is. So hopefully that is indeed how it comes through. That's what's supposed to happen. And SBA loans.
I have a question regarding city income restrictions. So how are we dealing with them, or I mean, with, this is specifically for the City of Ventura as well. I've got a listing that I'm in negotiations with. Are they still able to do that? Is that frozen for the time being? Anybody can share any information about that?
I don't have any knowledge on that currently.
I know, that's what I'm wondering.
I have a question. I typed in the chat room. What about property managers? Are they under the same mandates that we are? I, for one, have a property for sale with a vacant unit, and the landlord, we fell out of escrow, and the owner would like some rent because he can't pay his own rent or buy his own groceries. Are property managers under the same mandates that we are, can? And there are people that are about to be out of a home and need a place to go.
I can't answer that question. I don't know for sure. I think if they had a loan on the property, it'd be the same scenario. But as Marta said, we're not tax professionals. We don't, no, for sure. So if somebody else has a definite answer, that's great, but I don't have that answer, unfortunately.
I think they just need to reach out on all these avenues that I've discussed before to see if they qualify.
Well, my particular client has already gotten forbearance on his mortgage, but my curiosity is, we have, there are vacant units out there that people are wanting to rent. Do we know if property managers are in the same category as we are as Realtors?
What category? I'm sorry, I guess I just don't know. You mean as a small business or an independent contractor?
Yeah, I mean, as a, someone who has a contract with a landlord to fill a vacancy. Are they told not to fill vacancies right now? Are they told not to show the property to prospective tenants, is what I'm trying to understand.
I'm not sure, but I can reach out to like the Apartment Association and see if they can give, if they can enlighten us a little bit, and if so, I'll try to get that posted for you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I was on a webinar yesterday where an attorney was speaking, and he, I mean, what he basically said, and this was coming from an attorney, "I'm not saying this, and I'm not putting this out there as you should or should not do it, and you should or should not take this advice." But he said that we have these agreements with sellers and with owners. So we as agents are prohibited from doing our activities that we're supposed to do. If a seller wants to open a unit using gloves and stay in their house and let somebody go tour the unit and then leave, you're not precluded from giving that person the seller's number to contact directly, or giving the seller the renter's number to contact directly. And what they do with each other is not you doing anything wrong or not doing, not following the ban for leaving home and doing what you're supposed to do. Because there are people, maybe, that need a place to go and don't have anywhere to go. And if the place is vacant, and no one's going to be there face-to-face interacting with them, or just going inside looking around and making some sort of an agreement, could be sidestepping. But that was, again, disclaimer, I'm not telling you that's what you should do. It's just a thought that was put out there, and it was coming from an attorney who was.
Thank you, Cher. Okay, I believe we have Joel Singer, a CAR CEO, on the line. I've got, Joel, are you there?
I'm here.
Perfect, okay. We'd like to get you started. We appreciate you taking the time out to meet with our group. So go ahead and take it from here. Thank you.
Thanks for inviting me, and thank you, Tim. We recognize that CAR just how difficult and unprecedented this situation is. Clearly, this is something that nothing has prepared us for, and obviously, we're in uncharted territory at the moment. From a CAR perspective, just a couple of things, if I could. One, one thing we were prepared for at CAR is operating virtually. The entire CAR staff has been virtual for more than a week. 80% of the staff was out two weeks ago, and we're fully operational. In fact, we did more legal opinions this week than ever in the history of CAR. So I encourage you, if you have an issue or a question on a transaction, don't hesitate to call the CAR hotline. We're fully operational. We're deluged with calls and emails, but we will get back to you, and that's the way to get our best and latest opinion on anything. Things are changing very, very rapidly, as you know. CAR has also put in place a special website, and on that website, I think you'll find almost anything you can that will help you through these times. That website is car.org/coronavirus, and we're updating it on a continual basis. The two biggest issues for us are the definition that says "real estate brokerage is not an essential service." We're not in the essential service list, a list that was drawn by the governor from the federal CISA regulations, which are the traditional emergency service regulations. And because we're not on there, it essentially restricts many of the things that we traditionally would do as Realtors. It does not restrict, obviously, virtual sales where there's no face-to-face contact. And we are in the process, in the process, have been talking to the governor's office and to the state public health officers charged with changing those definitions on trying to get some better understanding of what we might also be able to do. Because we recognize that, for example, transacting a vacant property has minimal health risks if done properly, and by the same token, creates a housing opportunity that we badly need in California. So I want to assure you, we are working on getting the broadening. In each and every case, what we're asking for is also predicated on the best possible practices from the standpoint of community health, public welfare, and we're certainly particularly concerned by our members' health and well-being. So we are doing that at this point. However, I just need to say this to everyone, and I have to tell you, the organization is, has more split in opinions on this than almost anything I've seen in my years here. This isn't going to be determined politically. This isn't going to be determined by a call of action. This is going to be determined by the course of the virus, the pandemic here in California. And unlike when we're dealing with the governor of the legislature, we're now dealing with a public health officer. So in everything we do, we've got to be very clear that we don't intend to jeopardize public health. So when you see things like open houses going on, and they've been going on in Sacramento, it's not helpful to our ability to try to get some loosening of the current ordinance, which we feel is far too tight. Now, having said that, let me make two or three other quick comments, and then I'll go away, or I'll stay for questions, whatever your preference is. We are doing everything in our power, and as far as we can tell, we are still able to, excuse me, deal with existing transactions through to closing. County Recorder's Offices, we were part of a group letter that went out on that, and the County Recorder's Offices, for the most part, are functioning, and those doing electronic closings are functioning very well. We have also made every effort to get an expansion of e-notary that did not pass yet at the federal level. But you are able to use e-notaries from out of state if you need to, and the CAR attorneys can walk you through that as well. In addition, we are very focused on Realtor relief. We recognize that this unprecedented downturn is going to be very dislocating to both many members of our brokerage community, many brokers, and to salespeople. We have spent an incredible amount of time working with NAR in Washington to make sure that any relief program, unlike previous relief programs, are as open as we can possibly make them to Realtors. In particular, the problem in the past has often been your ability as an independent contractor to directly access these benefits. But we feel we've had some success there, along with NAR, and we do feel there's be a whole series of benefits that are available to Realtors to tide yourselves through financially. to tide yourselves through financially during this crisis. The bill passed the Senate two nights ago. It just passed the House. The president may have already signed it. He will certainly sign it. We will be establishing a hotline that will walk you through the process of applying for aid. For brokers, the most significant aid, without getting into details, we have a seven-page detailed paper on the website with links to the applications. For brokers, the most significant aid is likely to be small business loans. Those loans, because of the declaration on the CARE Act, which is the act I'm talking about, will be forgivable loans. There's also a whole series of other provisions for those of you who are maintaining employees extending sick leave. For agents, there's a brand-new classification of aid called PUA. This is pandemic unemployment assistance. And independent contractors are eligible for this. Please check the car.org/covidvirus website for the information. We've pushed it out and will continue to push it out to the local association AEs so that they have that information. And again, as I say, we're in the process and should have in place by Monday. People who will be there to help you if you have any problems applying for this type of assistance. I can go on with other things we're doing. I have to tell you, the CAR officers and the CAR staff has been working as hard as we possibly can. I don't know that, I've seen my staff burn as many hours of midnight oil as they have the last couple of weeks. But we want to do everything we can in this tremendous crisis. And if any of you have any individual questions, any individual suggestions, any feedback whatsoever, please send it to us. You can send it directly to me. I'm Joel S. at car.org. You can send it to anyone on the CAR staff. And as I say, we are fully operational and we'll do everything we can to assist any and all of you through this crisis. I'm glad to stay on the call for a little while or I'm perfectly willing to get out of your way and let you continue your town hall.
Joel, I thank you. Wendy's going to have a few questions that we've kind of pulled together. So Wendy can ask you a few questions and the group can see. Hopefully, we've got some answers.
So Joel, a couple of questions here from our members. First is, what are your thoughts on real estate life after COVID-19?
Okay, so, you know, we're looking at a tremendous economic downturn, obviously, with 3.3 million applying for unemployment one month. But we think it'll be somewhat short-lived. We think transactions, if done virtually, for sure. And there will be virtual transactions, will continue. And because of the shortage of inventory, we think there will be willing buyers and willing sellers. As you know, we put out forms that allow you to extend the transaction. We're seeing transactions that are going in with 120-day escrows and things like that. So we think in the short run, the market won't disappear. But it's going to be a sharp downturn. People are in a state of shock. People are obviously unwilling and should not be out, you know, touring houses as individuals. And we think it will turn down. But we also believe strongly that, given what's happened in the equity markets, given what's happened to our better understanding of how meaningful home is, we think real estate is probably going to be one of the leading sectors coming out of this. And so we think it'll be a fairly sharp recovery. We think we will see it in the downturn of total sales this year. But we'd like to believe that in the best-case scenario, by the third and fourth quarter, we'll be seeing levels going back to close to the levels we saw in January and February, which were outstanding levels of activity. So we do think that real estate in the long run, residential real estate, homeownership, is going to do well. I'd be less than candid with you on another subject, and that's on commercial office space and retail. I think they're going to suffer for a lot longer. I think for those of you who are experiencing working virtually, and I know from my staff and others, it is a very effective and attractive way for some of us to work. I think the demand for commercial office space goes down. And I'm extremely concerned, as we all should be, with the, you know, the devastating impact this is having on some small businesses, restaurants, and so on, that it's going to take a longer time for that commercial retail to recover.
Great, thank you. Just a couple other questions here. This might be a little loaded. Why are some realtors actively showing homes? Is there enforcement regarding this?
Okay, so enforcement of the governor's order, and there's a lot of controversy around this, and I recognize that. Enforcement of the, first of all, there's a dispute. The governor's order, we feel very certain, and I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, Tim, jump in here if I am misstating this. But our lawyers feel very certain that the governor's order prevails over local orders. And that's something that is also a little bit confusing because you have local orders that differ from the governor's orders in many instances. But we feel the governor's order is the right order. And unless we can get the changes we've been asking for, that means you really need to not do traditional showings, but certainly not do open houses and the like. We also are aware, I got a call to one of my staff members from the head of the staff, head of the Senate Judiciary Committee, saying, why are these open houses going on in Sacramento? And obviously, that could be very, very dangerous to our attempts to try to broaden and allow you to show, for example, vacant homes perhaps. So we need to all behave reasonably. And for all, for all of us, both as citizens and agents, there are these safe distancing requirements that must be observed at a very minimum. And so, you know, we've got to do all that. At the local level, there are some entities that are policing the governor's order. For example, in Lake Tahoe, we've been told that the local authorities are telling people they cannot move into Airbnbs. They cannot do certain other things. But for the most part, local authorities are not policing us. And that leaves it up to you as a local association as to what you want to do from a professional standard standpoint. We've asked repeatedly for NAR to give us some guidance on the code of ethics implications. But I have not gotten this as of yet. But you can also, and I know you in particular have an excellent relationship with your attorney, Jeff, I'm sorry, your local DA. You can also talk to them when you see violations that you as a community feel go beyond what realtors should be doing. But I do not expect, given the severity of the crisis, there to be a lot of local policing.
Okay, great, thank you. We have a member raising their hand right now for a question. So Sharon, I'm going to unmute you right now to ask your question.
Hi. Thanks, Joel. In our area, some of the brokers are working on a waiver that could be signed by the seller and the buyer to allow the home showings. That doesn't sound like...
We think that's problematic.
It doesn't sound like it's in line with what you just said.
We think that's problematic. Because that means the realtor is still facilitating a transaction. So we urge great caution in that area. Again, I would, when you're looking at doing that, I would encourage you to talk to Tim or certainly to call one of our hotline attorneys. We think that is dangerous. I thought you were talking about a different waiver, which is a waiver that allows the seller and the buyer to agree to close without, for example, your Avid, without your agent visual inspection. We're just finishing that. I think it'll be out today. And hopefully, in zip forms as quick, they're having some technical difficulties back in Michigan. But hopefully, in zip forms, very, very certain, very shortly. And that will help you negotiate a different kind of waiver between you when you're doing a virtual close or when you have a transaction that's running on close now, to make sure that it can still close without certain things that have been historically mandated.
Thank you.
One last question for you, Joel. I know you're back-to-back meetings these days, so we'll be respectful of your time. A question on the chat is, Joel, is there a new CAR form coming out for parties to sign for access to the property?
I don't believe there is that form coming out. We've put out the coronavirus addendum. That's being modified. That will be back up in zip, it's up in zip form, but a modified version will appear. We're putting out certain advisories and certain letters that you can share with clients, but I'm not aware of that form being worked on. As I said earlier, we think that's a very problematic area.
Great, okay, Tim?
Joel, thank you so much for taking your time to get on this call with us and inform so many different agents on being professionals. And thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Best of luck, everyone. Please stay well. And again, if we can help you in any way, shape, or form, let's see here, I'll reach out, please. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Okay, let's see, we've got remaining. So with this, this couple of things, couple announcements. If you don't have, I think we'll put it on the site later. But we do have, make sure you like our Facebook page. That's the facebook.com/BCRailtors. So facebook.com/BCRailtors. And also, the, the site for coronavirus updates is on CAR is carcovidupdates.org. So that microsite is updated constantly. That'll probably have the newer forms that are coming out, which Joe talked about, that Avid waiver, which I was wondering about because, you know, I have a potential buyer and I can't do my due diligence. So that'll be a good thing. So we may be able to get some transactions closed. Let's see, anything else here for the good of the order? That's, I think that's, Wendy, correct me if I'm missing anything, but I think that covers what we have to say. We have a little time for some more questions.
Yeah, just one question down below that I had, a reminder from one of our board members. So just a reminder that Joel mentioned, the CAR legal hotline is there for all of you. Please take advantage of it. I know that I've been on several of the AE calls throughout the state, and they are working overtime. I mean, it's unprecedented number of calls. But really, you're going to get the best information possible from that hotline. And I posted it in the chat, the information. Let me dig it up here and I'll put it at the bottom again. So, and I'll read it to you right now. So it's open Monday through Friday, nine to six, and Saturday from 10 to 2. And the number is, if you're ready, 213-739-8282. And I'll repeat it one more time, 213-739-8282. So this Zoom meeting is, is and was being recorded. So we will post that on social media and we'll send the link to all of the attendees so you can share with others or re-listen to some of the information. So, and we'll plan another as more information comes out and do our best to keep everyone updated with all of the information that keeps coming to us. As a reminder, staff is also working remotely. Our normal business hours and extended hours too, because I know some of you have our phone and you text us and we're trying to be very diligent about being responsive. So if you need anything, please reach out. We're here to help you and as your Board of Directors is as well. So thank you, everyone, really appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe, and be responsible. We're professionals, so don't, don't be the person that's out there making us look bad. So with that, I say goodbye and good health to all.